...this day and New Year's Eve and all these holidays, I might go to work for him for, well, eighteen years. And I can work overtime when I want and I can make up that money.
My only question was, well, I regarded to, you know, we always try to help monitor everything, but there's always, it always comes back to the table and hits us, you know, always does. I know it's completely different from all the other departments, I understand it, I've been there, but I don't know what the meaning is there. We, year after year, we're trying to give raises. I know one time, one year, we gave them a lot of raises and that was supposed to fix the problem, but it hasn't. So, I really, really don't.
Well, Karnes County's changed. It's definitely changed and we can't, and we can't get anybody through the door because there's too much competition out there. And I did have some people walk through the door and I sat down with them and started talking to them and stuff and they were filling out their applications and you ask them, you tell them, "You're gonna have a problem taking a drug test," and out the door they go and they take their application with them. So, that's the type of people you get through and I don't need that.
Yeah, well, you know, everybody says, you just said, "You don't know what the problem is." You want me to tell you what the problem is? When you sit up here, you, you don't make this decision based on your best information and, and your judgment. No, you don't do that. You, you're listening to, all these people are threatening to sue you, remove you, give you dirty looks. So, you let that, it's peer pressure. You know, just like when you're in school, the cool kids smoking and drinking and doing all that stuff, hey, you know, hey, that's the same thing that goes on here. You got the yarders and all these people saying they're gonna sue you. They're always saying he's gonna sue you and this is wrong. You let all that influence your decision. This is right and wrong. I mean, this is not about being popular or anything else.
I don't know about, I don't know about y'all gentlemen or the judge, but there hasn't been anybody in my twelve years that's gonna influence my decision because I don't bow down to anybody. And that's the way I serve as a commissioner, I've served like that twelve years.
In your opinion?
In my, in the way I know, and let's not get into an argument, Carl. We're federal commissioners, we're friends, we're here to respect the county and we don't need, we don't need to show them any kind of argument.
I'm just asking, I'd like to sit down with a few of y'all and talk about it and let's see if we can come up with a solution, that's what I'm asking.
You know what, Jeff, that probably gonna be the best thing, just maybe sit down or talk to some of your guys or something. I just have a problem that we have been trying to, we have been trying to help you as much as we can, but it's always, and I understand that.
The problem is, there's, there's a lot of jobs out there and they're paying, paying a lot more. You go to the quarries down here where we're getting the material and that, and those guys in the, in the quarries are making, you know, that fourteen dollars an hour running, running loads and loading trucks, which is pretty good salary, but you figure the guys that you, we have now, I think it's twelve dollars an hour, I'm, forty hours a week. It's tough. If you got a pickup payment or a car payment and you got a house payment, they can't make it on twelve bucks an hour. They're not gonna come to you. That's the, that's the overall picture that everybody has to look at.
As far as this whole situation right now, I don't know if legally anything can be done within a fiscal year because it is not an emergency and it is not unforeseen and the budget was adopted. We would have to consult with legal counsel, whomever that may be, to find out if it would be possible. Because we aren't in an emergency situation yet because we aren't unstaffed.
Exactly.
Right, we're falling behind every day. I, I need a crew right now to strictly be putting pipes in. We got pipes that are rotten in the county and they're caving in and I, I don't even have enough people to keep up with that. We're backfilling some of the roads, the pipes and stuff and it's gonna rain, I'm gonna have a bigger mess on my hands because I ain't got enough people to go around.
I thought of the contract, I thought of the contract, me too, but Pete said, I was in the back of my head, but I understand we'll have to pay high wages to contractors because they can contract, they can't contract the oil companies.
And we don't have anything in the budget for contract labor either, so, you know.
We would have to move between line items to be able to do that.
Well, I'm, like I said, I'm here asking, we're gonna have to come up with a solution for this because we're not going forward, we're going backwards.
How many maintainer operators, I know you got, we gotta keep going, but how many maintainer operators do you have right now?
Three, four, four.
You have four, basically one for each group, so how many?
Gilbert's been on light duty now for a pretty good while because he had surgery on his hand and he picks on having surgery on his other hand because when he run the maintainer all day, his hands actually stay moved, his finger for collapsing on him and he had to have the propofol surgery. So, he would, he's, he's gonna be out again when he goes back into surgery at the end of the month. So, he's back running the maintainer, he's doing pretty good, so.
Okay, we take no action on number eighteen?
Yeah, for now, yeah. Yeah, just let them know individually or whatever, let them know what to do and, I mean, we're here to help you as much as we possibly can.
That's what I'm asking, I just come in here to ask you now. I don't wanna get in squabble, but.
I understand.
The county's gonna have to do something on the line, definitely. And somebody could also plan, idea.
Can you, uh, can you check what the surrounding, I don't always do that, but what the surrounding county, the maintainer operators, all they were making and maybe, can you see what, I'll, go ahead, you know what they're making?
My brother-in-law works in Jackson County, runs a maintainer, runs a tractor, he's making twenty-two fifty an hour for the end of five years.
For what county?
Jackson County.
What's the population there?
Same like ours.
It's up in Edna.
Yeah, it's a small county.
About that, Karnes County.
They're in the unit system or?
I'm not sure.
No, they're.
How many years has he been there?
Five.
Five years?
Edna's in the precinct system. They're in the precinct system.
Unit?
Jackson, no, precinct system.
Pre, oh, they're still in there?
Yeah.
That's Jackson?
Yeah.
And he's making twenty-two and he's only been there five years? What was his start salary?
I don't know what the start salary is.
Something like that, if you could bring us something like that, Jeff, and maybe something, I'm sorry, and then maybe something like what the truck drivers are making around here with the oil companies, something that we could actually, you know, put sink our teeth in and look at it. Because, I mean, what do y'all think?
Is truck drivers what's needed or is equipment operators what's needed?
That's why I ask.
I need some equipment operators, I'm not using truck drivers.
Need two truck drivers.
Yeah, two truck drivers, two maintainer operators. Unipersonal. Because there's all times you're not gonna run a maintainer, but if I could get my hands on at least four people or I could split and have two crews, I don't have enough to crew right now. I don't have enough experience out there and we're trying, we got some boys that are trying and we're getting there, but it's taking time. Maintainer operators, a act, nobody can just get on that piece of equipment and run it, you have to have a feel for a piece of equipment.
And there's one standing in the back of the room that used to work for us, running a blade and was very, very good and he's no longer with us because of the wage. And, and what we did, and I, and I said that day, and I was damn gonna stand by what I said, I said, "Y'all have not, we had not fixed the situation, we had only made it worse." And in long term, we made the wrong decision that day. Now, the day you took it back, you made a very short-term decision because that day, you made all those people out there in the audience happy and were against it. You made them happy. But, long term, you didn't do the best thing, we didn't do the best thing for the county, I can tell you that. We can see that. I knew we'd be right back here again because we still had a problem. We fixed it, then we unfixed it, and now we're trying to fix it again, which Lawana says, hey, you probably can't even do it. You made that decision, that, that's what you gotta understand, when you sit up here, when you make a decision, you're stuck with it, right or wrong, just like saying, "I do." And so, I'm really mad at it. And so, if you're okay with the decision you made back then, good. I know, I know, I am still good with the decision I made to give these people their, their step raise.
Carl?
I just wanted to say that at budget time, I think Lawana did come with numbers from surrounding counties of what other Rutherford Department employees made and that she brought that up before the set program was brought in, I think. And that, you know, we were.
Sorry, I don't.
We were ahead, we were still ahead of the surrounding counties.
Surrounding counties.
The WIT and, I don't remember who else.
Of our pay.
Of the pay scale.
So, we're.
And in the meantime, if you're short some really good quality of people, there's four men sitting right there.
Oh, wait a minute, that didn't say they're quality.
I did too. I said they were.
Watch your words.
I said they were.
I agree.
And they are still commissioners.
When I get out of here, I'm gonna go run a maintainer because first work gotta be done.
Now, Ms. Frazee, if you live.
If you're a commissioner, you jumped on equipment, you always did.
Gotta get it done.
You live in a suburb, do you always look to your neighbor to see if they got a new car or they, they're adding on to their house or they're planting trees or they're planting shrubs? Or do you just worry about you and your husband, what you make and what you do with your money?
Well, but.
You can't run this county by looking at other counties.
What you mentioned earlier was that if, if, if the head of the department comes to you and says, "This is what they need to make that department work," are you gonna do that for all of them?
What he's saying is, what he's paying right now is not working.
But are you gonna do that for all the departments?
And I don't care what these other counties are doing, they are not Karnes County.
Right, I'm talking about.
And they don't have the same problems that we have.
Let's move on to nineteen, please. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let's, let's move on to nineteen, please, because that traces already. Okay, we're going to nineteen. Discuss, approve, disapprove, possible leasing Rungy County yard to Rungy Volunteer Fire Department. Arthur Jeff.
Since it's a voluntary fire department and we're not using that yard no more, I'd say let the attorney take and write up some kind of agreement with him. Maybe upkeep, upkeep, upkeep and clean, and I think that's a good way to go.
Didn't, didn't our county attorney already lease that yard or not?
No.
No.
Gillette.
Gillette. And at the end of the month, it ran out, it's, it's over, it's back to us.
No. The Rungy yard is still.
Did he give them, make a payment?
He made a payment for November.
Okay, he told me it's gonna be, the end of the month would be the last time.
I got a check from him for November.
Oh, okay, okay. So, it's still held, but I know he's, he was telling me he's gonna drop it, so.
We should lease it to them for a dollar, a dollar a month, a dollar a year or something. You gotta put a, you gotta put a figure over there to get it.
This is bothering me.
But in terms that they keep it clean and make it look decent around now.
Yeah, exactly.
If it looks raggedy, we're gonna run them off.
There you go.
I'll be the judge with it.
We could put something in there too, that we could keep our equipment there, as you ever need to keep equipment.
Oh, yeah.
I don't wanna be just kicked out completely, even though other volunteers, I respect them, but.
We let the, we let the state park their, their staff there and stuff like that.
Not stop the state from doing that.
They just wanna put their trucks out there, so every time that they have a fire, they don't have to go out there and find the battery because somebody stole the battery or they sucked all the gas out of it, this and that, we have a problem very much.
Well, what about, just an idea, what about not leasing and just writing up a gentleman's agreement that they can use it as long as they keep it clean and not ties it up into a lease?
That's fine.
Actually, what needs to be done, I think, is an interlocal agreement or memo of understanding between the two agencies.
Without actually it being a lease, you know, keep it open for other options to.
They need to open up a pay up, make an open, pay up where starting to get all the tires and stuff, and they can open that up. There's nothing in that building.
I'll make a motion to Jeffrey and Tracy be appointed to negotiate the agreement with the city of Rungy or use the.
That should be Rungy Volunteer Fire Department, not the city.
Yes.
A lot of bear with that. Any votes? Thanks, Jeff. Number twenty. Discuss, approve, disapprove, a strong resolution of Karnes County Commissioners Court to oppose the approval of the proposed injection well at the intersection of US 181 and FM 1353 by the Texas Railroad Commission in order to protect the health and safety of citizens of Karnes County and work with the city of Karnes City and Concerned Citizens Group. Answer is true. Show them and be held on it.
We come here this morning again humbly asking for your support in trying to help us and that the county work with the city to possibly pass a strong resolution that will help us to protect the ETJ of the citizens and the county. I, I know you're facing many different problems and, and we all are in this county and it's, it's coming very rapidly and, and we're not exactly as prepared as we probably need to be with what's on and going on. And so, that's why we all must stay alert as to what, to these changes and, and still allow our communities and our county to grow along with protecting things that we've already spent some of the years building. So, we're asking for y'all to pass a strong resolution that will help us to, and enable us to try to have more community support between the county and the city and what's going to be going on. Not, not just with injection wells per se, but possibly truck washes, for instance, as well. Anything coming around in close. I know that, and also with what's going on in our county with the injection wells, with the, the different things, the traffic, all the things. Last week, I was able to go and speak with Senator Zafarini and I was very impressed with what she had to say. And she is also going to try to help. Her idea was that that is not a suitable place for this injection well. I'm not up here saying that we're all in this injection well, but they need to be strategically placed. And I know that many of you are now going to that intersection with the light, where the light is now. If this thing passes, it's gonna allow two-hundred-and-forty-three more trucks at least per day going in and out of that intersection, into that 1353, which is a very narrow road. It's, 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 it's still with the light, it is an accident waiting to happen because of, of, there are no turning lanes, narrow lanes. The property they wanna use is, is not, they're not gonna even make a turn, they can't get straight going into that property before the cars are coming. And, and so, it's, it's, it's very imperative that, that we try to do what we can do. I know you say, and I know it puts you in a precarious situation because how do you distinguish what, who are we gonna help there, if we help these, and how are we gonna help these over in this part of the county, you know? But, as Senator Zafarini was saying, something is, whether it starts to be done legislatively or what, something is going to have to be controlling, there's gonna have to be some guidelines as to where these well, injection wells are going in and, and more so. And, um, we're just asking, the city was able to, we have hired personal attorneys that are helping us fight this injection well. And the city came on board by hiring their attorney to, to meet with our attorneys, up to ten thousand dollars, I believe it is, is that they, said that they would help with, so that we can make some kind of resolution and.
Have a stronger voice.
A strong, yes, and, and more of, to prevent these type of things from happening because there's, there's not ordinances, there's not. If our city is to grow, which we hope Karnes City will grow, where are we gonna grow? If we're gonna have these injection wells in our ETJ, if we wanna grow out, then we're, the city's already saying that we do not want trucks brought, they passed an ordinance, trucks can't go through town, however, there's still tons of trucks going through town. If we put and allow these injection wells to come into our ETJ, how is our city going to grow? I, I, you know, every day, there are new things popping up, every day, there are new things popping up. We're seeing it everywhere. And, and that's what we're really concerned about it. And Senator Zafarini was equally as concerned and she was going to speak with, so, but, you know, not, not just on this, but I, I wanna alert you all to the fact that this is something that we need to keep a really close eye on as, as our, our community begins to grow and, and bloom out, that we're gonna have to put some things in, 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 in place that we have never, ever thought about having in place before because we never had that opportunity to come to us. With, with many blessings that this is bringing, it's also bringing a lot of different challenges for us. And so, you know, that's what we're asking and I think you may have some things to say.
Well, basically, where it's, where they're planning on constructing this injection well, it, there's five homes, there's five residential homes. And the Garcias, and we've been speaking to the whole neighborhood, of course, we had a meeting initially with landowners and we have like, what, fifteen people that are on board, support, we're not the only ones that are hired legal assistant. But there's like fifteen of us that are landowners, that live within the vicinity of this injection We're the ones representing them, really, when we, we're having more of a, they're allowing us to come because they're working, Mr. Garcia's working, the Garcias that live in the area, the Wisher, Mrs. Wisher. However, we, we strongly, strongly feel that we really don't know what these trucks are gonna bring in. We don't know what chemicals are going to be disposed in this injection well. We don't know that, the, the issues that are going to eventually come up later on in, in several years. We're really worried currently, if you pass through the area, if you drive through even, not even a few blocks from her house, you can smell, you can have, you're, you're, as you're driving through, I asked my husband, "What is that?" Because that's the smell of everything that's going on. And then now, we are gonna have, allow this injection well to come in and bring in all these trucks with chemicals that we don't know are, we don't know what's in those trucks. And, uh, Mr. Senator Zafarini expressed that they shouldn't be located behind homes, you know, in residential areas.
Who cares?
And they, I mean, we have the daycare not too far from there, that Melco is bringing in things that we don't know what Melco's doing. Mrs. Talk, speaking to the owner of the daycare, Mrs. Krausie, she said, "I can't allow my kids to go outside and play because of the smell. Some days, it's stronger than other days." Also, we went, we visit with the, we went to the city council and I think that Sherri Summers, the commissioner, Sherri Summers said it, said it very well, the way she expressed herself and she said, "You know, ladies, and Mr. Rudman wasn't able to attend today because he had something very critical going on at the bank." But Sherri Summers said, "I think that, you know, y'all continue, go to the board, go to the county commissioners' court and express, you know, what y'all have developed and are currently doing and see if they can support y'all and see if we can stop this injection well from happening on December the thirteenth. That's when we have a hearing in Austin." And I don't know if Mrs. Shaw, our judge, received, I'm sure, because y'all also wrote a letter on our behalf trying to get this injection well, getting, y'all helped us initially on getting a hearing and that's where we're at right now. The city wrote a letter, several people that live in the area, we all wrote letters and that's where we're at now, going, attending the hearing on December the thirteenth. And Mrs. Lozano was telling me that she did some research and just within a year, November, November two thousand and eleven to now, we have twenty-three approved injection wells in the county. I know down thirteen fifty-three that intersects, I know there's one and I know, I know several people that are fighting this injection wells and we just came to y'all to see what kind of help and support y'all can, can give us on December the thirteenth.
I would also like to add that we have also been speaking with the LSO water supply system and we're going to, we're meeting there at three o'clock this afternoon as well, because again, this is, you know, oil is great, but we need clean, good water to drink as well, so.
Ladies, if I may make a suggestion, if it's the wishes of this court, probably ought to post this meeting on the thirteenth. So, in the event that all of us here wanted to go, it'd be posted and we would be covered. I just thought I'd throw that out.
We would love for any, anybody to come, anybody that would like to go. Like I said, this is not.
As long as I have a ride.
Okay. This is just not.
I, I don't have an out-of-town car.
This is just not to.
You'll lose your license.
This is not just to protect that, this is, Dean and I feel a very strong sense of obligation to try to help. We spend a lot of time just trying to get this stuff together. We feel a very strong sense of obligation in, in pursuing this because it is for the betterment of the community. And so, with that, we say thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Hey, in regards to item number twenty and on the agenda, I make a motion to approve a strong resolution of the Karnes County Commissioners Court to oppose the approval of the proposed injection well at the intersection of US Highway one eighty-one and Fonding Market, Highway thirteen fifty-three by the Texas Railroad Commission in order to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Karnes County and work with the city of Karnes City and Concerned Citizens Group.
Our second motion. Before we go on, Mr. Moyn, I understand here, and I do agree with that, it's right by a major highway. And when you said, Mr. Moyn, about if the city ever wants to grow, if they grow that way, that would be the ideal place to grow, is toward one eighty-one. So, and I understand that. But right here it says, "To protect the health and safety of the citizens of Karnes County," which is, that's true. But I just think that we should have it more in detail, that motion, I believe, because we have, Mr. Lozano, how many more proposed well sites do we have? Seventy, fifty-three, you said?
There's a total of fifty-three that have been approved since nineteen seventy-eight. Twenty-four of those in the last year.
Twenty-four have been approved in the last year?
Correct. And in some cases, those approvals are from one day to the next because nobody fights them.
I've got five.
Yeah, and there's, there's five or six on eighty between Helena and Nixon, and then that are being constructed right now.
And there's some of those that are posted on major highways also?
Yeah, and you know, and I, some of those are fine, they're out in the boonies, there's no.
They were, they were.
But do we need that? I mean, that's the question.
So, those are the ones that haven't probably opposed, right?
Right. I'm gonna oppose them.
Back in there, but the ones that are.
And if the landlord owns the property all around it, then he's the only one that has control over opposing it.
Out on ninety-nine, actually, actually, there's an injection well just a stone's throw, I think it's the High Roller out on ninety-nine and it's not, it, they're just getting so concentrated and.
Well, this one is the first one that will be within the ETJ and that, and it's around residential areas and that's our main concern is that it is just so congested, not only congestion, but you already have, you have homes, you have, I mean.
There are churches.
There are residential churches.
It's within, and it's within feet of a major intersection now with lights and all that, right?
Do you know where it is?
Yes.
You know, it's right behind Melco.
It's right behind the.
And actually, it's further back in there to where it's almost behind where Mr. Whitty's cars are. It goes further back in there, that's where they turn in. Because I believe they might be possibly washing trucks there and, in the front, because they're putting them into the tanks. And, and there again, you know, I'm just saying for future references as well, since we're talking about injection wells, also about these truck washes or anything else that might be hazardous that may be coming into, close into our area, we, you know, we need to, because I'm gonna tell you, this is what happened and this is what happened with this injection well. So many of these things just get pushed through administratively and they're done because people aren't aware of it. They'll get a letter and a lot of people want, they don't pay attention to what's going on. So, a lot of these wells that are popping up, you know, it just, they just slide through the cracks and that's how they end up, unless, you know, somebody.
Yeah.
And, and that's what happened with us. I just happened to see that name in the newspaper, then I thought, "Hey, I better call my neighbor or say, call my brother." "What, what is this? What's going on?" He said, "Well, it's an injection well." So, and that's been since May seventh that we got this letter. So, we've been dealing, trying to get some help and so, like I said, we would greatly appreciate any, any support we can get from anybody.
I know that the city, I, I believe I spoke, the mayor said that he'll be attending and they, and I don't know if the manager, the office man, the city manager will be attending, but the mayor said, and I know that our attorneys are communicating with the attorneys, the city attorneys. And I, I believe that they will also be there as well.
And from people that I've talked to, they'll, they'll say that the railroad commission is not really concerned about traffic, that that's the highway department's issue and, and they're more concerned with like in the water and different things. However.
Health issues.
Health issue, there, there's, there's a lot of gamuts that this goes under me and so, we just.
And that's why we feel that, and, and I strongly feel that Sherri Summers said it the best, the way she expressed herself was, "If we get the county, we get the city, we get concerned citizens, maybe we'll have a strong voice in Austin." And, and that's why we're here, is that we really need a strong voice. And, and that's why we're here is that we really need a strong voice. We really don't know what's in these truck washes, we don't know what's in this 18-wheelers. I don't know what they're going to be injecting into our, the ground. And we do have homes. We do have a, we have, we have a total of five homes in the close vicinity. It's in the Garcia's backyard practically, it's walking distance.
So now we're looking at this, if you can maybe have your attorney look at it as well as like, you know, possibly what other issues might arise that may, are maybe, maybe get together with the city so that y'all can figure out what other issues, you know, so we're prepared, so we're, so we will be prepared of anything else that may try to come in, that we will already have our ordinances in place or whatever we need. Because whoever, whoever thought here in front of Congress like this?
We need to set up some guidelines and some-
Some structure, yes. Something that's in paper that we can say, well, this is this and this and this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Carl, I didn't mean to interrupt or anything, it's just that the way it, right here, it states is to protect the health and safety of citizens of Karnes County. And we do know that we do need injection wells in Karnes County. You wanna state that maybe with stipulation in it, it's close to the city limits? You don't want a residential, like, just keep it at residential.
Well, I think by law, the city has jurisdiction beyond its current limits of what, it's something I don't know if it's 500 yards or five miles, it's, it's quite a bit.
Excuse me, can I say this, Carl? Our attorney was telling me that there was, I've exactly, forgot exactly what he called it, but there's something that, and he was saying that the county would even be stronger in trying to support this one thing. So, I mean, we'll be glad to give the attorney here or who represents the county permission to speak with our attorneys on how, just like the city's attorney is also speaking with our attorneys, you know, collaborating, they come to a resolution like, I mean, that's going to be done. So, maybe, maybe who, I'm not sure who is it that would be representing the county.
Well, may, may has always been our attorney, it's always been our county attorney, but now, well, the judge has another attorney right now, so I couldn't answer that question.
So, you know, so they might want to, the attorneys that we have working on this injection well, asking what steps can be taken to help collaborate with the city and the county as well. Because I understand, we're not trying to put you in a, in a position to say, you know, Joe Brown over here might have, you know, hundred, he might have a thousand acres and he wants an injection well on it and that's good and it's, that's what they need to-
I understand what you're saying.
Yes, okay.
We have to create some kind of guidelines. Okay. So it goes the way you said it. Motion's been made, seconded, and all the papers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm not, I'm not opposing the fact of it. No, the thing I'm gonna oppose is that I wanted a stipulation in there placed that it's because it was close to the city limits, something like, we do need injection wells. But if we oppose to this one, the way it's stated, the way Carl read it, every time there's an injection well being placed, even though we need it, if one resident says that no and everyone counts it equally like everyone else, but that's the reason, not because I'm opposing it, but I'm opposing the way it was stated within here.
Is there a way that the county can make something to say that there should no, be no injection wells within so many feet of the ETJ or so many whatever?
Yes, maybe we have-
Miles even, you know?
That's the reason I'm opposing it right now, it's because it's, did you want to?
Yeah, I had a comment on that. I do the permitting for that and I don't have any guidelines. I mean, they come in and I'm checking the permit and all I'm checking is whether they're in the flood zone and that they turn in an application to build, but they don't give us any guidelines on what I can or can't approve within the city limit, I mean, in the county.
I, I think the problem here and I think one time Mr. Yauer and I spoke at H B, I think that the problem here is we didn't see this coming.
I understand.
I mean, we weren't prepared.
Yes, ma'am.
I think as, as the city and the county, we weren't prepared to, to like, like-
You don't have a zoning or an ordinance, you just like-
Right. You know, we don't have an ordinance as to what these people can come and do within our area. I mean, who is supervising these permits?
Right, there's no guidelines.
There's no guidelines.
I understand.
Is there something that we need to think about or, and who do we go to? Do we go to the city? We go to the county? Or the ones implementing? She implementing, you know, guidelines as to what can be, what can take place, what-
So that we can prevent this from happening again.
I, exactly. We have to just look into it, we're gonna have to look into it, we'll have a special meeting on that and see if we can come up with some kind of guidelines or how we go about getting any kind of guidelines on these injection wells. We'll, we'll see you.
See if other counties maybe have put something in there.
Look into other counties and see if they got something in place and see how they do it, just kind of, but as of now, motion passes three to one. Okay, 21, discuss approved, disapproved funding legal expenses not to exceed $10,000 to assist opposing the approval of the proposed injection well at the intersection of US 181 and FM 1353 by the Texas Railroad Commission in order to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Karnes County, Dr. Tripp, Ruffman, Cheryl Moy, and Deanna Williams.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve funding legal expenses not to exceed $10,000 to assist opposing the approval of the proposed injection well at the intersection of US Highway 181 and Fonda Market 1353 by the Texas Railroad Commission in order to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Karnes County.
We have a motion on the table, do you want to have any discussion on it?
I don't know what our limitations are or what we can do. I don't know if we can approve this $10,000 today. I think we need to find out what our limitations are as a county. Ross here?
How's the attorney here?
Okay, no, they stepped out.
Can I say something? The city did pass this number solution and they did, there was, that was a cutoff limit with-
Ten, ten thousand?
Yes, sir.
If that is passed, there would have to be a budgetary amendment, perhaps that's not an amendment.
I was just, just about to-
But it could be qualified because it's an emergency in unforeseen circumstances.
It could.
But how does that apply then to other proposal, other injection pump, you know?
That's what I was gonna ask, I was gonna question this.
I understand that, I understand that. And, and, you know, I, I've thought about that. However, it's in the ETJ of the city limit and that, to me, that makes it, that is a strong difference right here because I, it is gonna prevent our city from growing, it needs to grow, it's, it's the location, it's the location of it. It's like I said, it's not about-
Injection wells.
And, and you know what? That's right. It's not about the injection well, it's about the location of it. And it's, it is imperative and, and the city, and I think the city realized that, hey, you know, we don't have something in place, we gotta, we gotta get our act together with this, we gotta do something. And, and I feel like if I would be sitting up there and someone would be talking to me, I would be saying, you know what? We do have a problem and we, we need to recognize that too because, and I know we've got the roads, we have this and this and this and this.
Yes.
But we're gonna create other problems if we don't start taking care of these issues because right now it's just an injection well there. Then, then what it might, then what might, may come, right there in the ETJ. We have got to do something and that's what separates our argument from any other arguments in the county is where this well is located.
Which means you have to develop criteria specific to when you would cover those kinds of-
Exactly.
Right, that's where we, that's where we have to take-
And, and as the county, that's when the county would look at it and say, we're gonna look at so many miles away from the T E T J to where, to start putting these injection wells in if they, if they choose to. I don't know, after talking to Senator Zaffarini and she did not even have a clue about what was going on with what we were talking about before she had her little speech at the city hall that day, she was very opposed to certain restrictions that, that these things need to have much more restrictions on, on than what's-
Yes.
Because she said, first of all, they should not be called disposal wells, disposal well, they're not disposing of anything, they're just replacing it somewhere else. And how on nine acres of property where they're putting this, is it gonna stay contained without going into other people's stratus? Into the city? And then the city, there's also water lines running there, so, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Very much, thank you.
I made a motion to approve.
My, my concern on this was, well, this one isn't the ETJ. My concern was that we have 24 other ones that have been approved, but there could be neighbors, there could be other concerned citizens that are gonna come up to us and also, y'all have to realize that we make this motion today, they're gonna be up here also for those $10,000. So we're gonna have to know that it's because it's within the ETJ and not just out there. There're gonna be more concerned citizens out on Lakeland, we may-
Be worried.
Right. Right, so we have no criteria that matters on that.
Hey James, and that's when, and that's when you're gonna start making your criteria for that because your criteria must say that if, if, if it's within so many feet of a home or something in the, in the county. I mean, you can make your own criteria.
Maybe intersection or whatever.
Yes.
Right.
And so you, commissioners' court, they'll be the ones along with the city or whoever are going to, how are you gonna work this? But to make your criteria, yes, you're gonna have to have it because how do you say, oh, I'm gonna do it for them, but I'm not gonna do it for them.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get to.
But you have to have criteria for that and when you get that, it'll be written down and it will say, this is, this is it, it's like this and this and this.
Right. But if we do this or this passes or whichever way it may go, that criteria needs to be, gonna have to get developed right away because if not, everybody's gonna hit us up before we pass a resolution on the criteria or whatever we have to do. So that's, somebody's gonna have to jump on that immediately.
Actually, it needs to be probably before we go to the hearing in December 13th.
I mean, what kind of-
The city is-
It's Thursday.
And I'm saying, what kind of support are we? I mean, do y'all have to vote? What kind of support, will y'all be providing for us on December the 13th?
What time is the hearing in Austin?
I believe it, well, it's on a Thursday. It falls on a Thursday and it's, apparently it's an all day thing.
I was just asking because that's regular Commissioners Court that day.
Mr. Pittens will be attending. He said that him and the mayor will be attending and they send us here to, to speak to y'all and, and see what kind of support y'all could, you know, provide for us. And like I said, it's not just us two.
We, no, we, you know, I mean, it's just that we felt so strongly about this that we've got our own attorneys going on this as well.
And there's, there's, like I said, there's like 15 of us that live down that road, the Jonas's, the Millers, the Nichols, Mrs. Miller that lives down that road, the Garcia's, the Wisherts, the Moys, ourselves, Mr. Rudman, there's, there's Cruz, Cruz and, and Frantas. I mean, we, we have, we have-
Ms. Krausy?
No, I understand that. So Carl, did you wanna make a motion? That's the reason I-
I already did.
With, because it's by the ET, okay?
Right, and it's, there's four incorporated cities in the county, we all know that and it falls well within the ETJ of one of the incorporated cities in our county. And we're talking about health and safety of the citizens.
I agree.
Make my motion. Motion's on the table.
Well, it's got to do with the safety and everything and, but the thing is, you know, if we do what, for one, we're gonna do for all of them. I'm definitely opposed to the injection well and I think, I don't, I think we should do everything we can to fight that injection well in that location, but I don't think that we could just pass this motion.
And your, your main concern?
We have to pass, we have to have some kind of guidelines.
We have to pass something before we, before we pass the motion.
Excuse me, but will that not send a message to the city that you're not trying to, you know, the city is already committed to help with that? So will that not send a message out that the city, the city is going to commit to try to help this be a better situation for the people in our county and then the county doesn't wanna commit to that as well? And I understand what you're saying.
Because we're committed to, to oppose this injection well. We passed the resolution, but I don't see that we can legally pass this $10,000 expenditure right now. We haven't had some guidelines, that's what I'm saying.
I would think probably it'd be in the best interest of the court to establish the guidelines before you say you're gonna spend any money or dedicate money, but I would think that could be done before the November 30th meeting, which would then allow-
30th.
Correct. Which would then allow this item to be back on the November 30th agenda.
Cheryl, that a ways, we'll have it correct.
Well, in that way, it will establish it and we won't be changing it after we're ready to-
We're not gonna deny y'all the justice, we want it done properly.
Well, I think our whole objective is to try to, to, to protect this and to, to get the city and the county to, we have to all work collaborating together to try to make this a better place for us because we got lots of stuff happening here and lots of challenges.
Did the city have any particular guidelines when they, didn't they allocate some money to help you? Kind of like what we're doing here today? Did they have any guidelines or criteria that you had to meet to give that to you?
No, they just approved, they just, actually, the city commissioners were all opposed to the injection well because I think the majority lived within that vicinity. So they just went ahead and voted that way.
And just, being my idea that we're making this a little too complicated, I mean, at the moment, like, we, we could always come back and, and say that, but it's really clear where it is and what it is and the effect of it.
Excuse me.
I mean, I'll tell you this, when, when I was a kid growing up, my mother didn't have a list of what I could and couldn't do. I mean, she just looked at it and if it was wrong, then it was wrong. To me, this is very clear, it's wrong.
And if we-
Yeah, we know it's wrong.
I understand, I understand. Just a minute, just a minute, I was on this for a second.
Excuse me, can I, can I, what, can I, maybe I can, just a second. What happened was our attorney contacted the city attorney with some information. The city attorney contacted the city manager and the city manager said, I can't authorize you to, that I'm gonna pay you for your services, if you wanna read this stuff from their attorneys, you can, but I can't authorize to pay you unless it goes through the court. And because our attorney was working with, wanted to work with the city to try to get something going, some kind of criteria or something, something. Because if, if it doesn't, then there's, it just keeps going on and nothing happens. And so then that's when we went to the city and back, and to the city again. And then the city talked about it and they decided, yes, it was very important. So they authorized $10,000.
The cap.
We didn't ask them for ten, they offered the $10,000, up to $10,000 to pay their city attorney to work with ours, to come up with the resolution and some information.
Well, to go to Austin, to represent the city and to fight and to try to stop this injection well.
And if Trip were here, he could explain to you, because-
But I understand if y'all need to meet again, I mean, we understand that, you know-
If it's not written correctly, maybe someone can guide us and help us to write it correctly so that it can, you take your-
Yeah, I would-
Because I feel like this-
I would assume to, I'm sorry, I didn't, I would assume just to go ahead and pass it and come back on it, when we have some criteria on it. And not that we're telling you no, but-
No action?
It's no action, it's not stated here at ETJ or anything. I would feel more comfortable having it written correctly. Oh, there's Trip right there.
Oh, good.
So who's going to take the bull by the horns and contact either Mr. Busman, Ms. Yoder, Ross, George, whomever to get?
I'm gonna talk to Barbara, or the judge, when she gets back.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and I'll talk to the judge and tell him where we're at and where we're gonna go from there.
Just so it doesn't slip through the cracks.
Yes. I would, I don't know where she went to, but as soon as I get all over, I'll, I'll let her know what, what we're at on this. Trip, did you have-
No, I'm just, well-
No, I'm just, well, well, I apologize.
Now, the concern, the concern we're having here was that, you know, we do, one, one, we gotta do it for everyone. This one is within the ETJ, but we have no guidelines, criteria, or anything written up, as of right now. So, what we wanted to do is take no action right now, have that done immediately, to where, we actually, I guess, 'cause we have fifty-three, twenty-four wells right now, that they might come to us the same way, but it's not exactly the same thing, 'cause this one's within the ETJ, so, we need, I believe we need some kind of guidelines or criteria written up immediately, so we can go ahead, and we're not denying it in any way, 'cause I, I really agree with it, you know, 'cause it is real close, but, I guess to where everyone else just can't come and bombard us, and if y'all don't mind, just waiting as quickly as we can get it done.
I understand, and, and I mean, I don't blame you for taking that position, certainly, you know, except, we just, you know, this is a little different.
Yes, it, it, it is.
Judge, could I say, one comment? Even though, the best-case scenario, like you said, we make these kind of guidelines, okay? And we're gonna stick to them, and this would certainly fall well within that. Okay, well, let's just say hypothetically, something didn't meet our criteria, so we didn't do anything about it, and then, let's just hypothetically say there was some kind of horrific accident, injection where the people were killed. I mean, you make a criteria, that's good, but, then, you know, it can also go the other way.
I think, we make it, it's just for our decision to deny it. If it keeps going, the rural commission does whatever they gotta do, and it still gets established, at least we did our part.
I know, but all I'm saying, when you make something definite, and you say, "These are the boundaries," if there's something just a little bit outside of it, just by a little, little bit, you see what I'm saying? You know, you're not leaving it...
But if we don't, if we don't make them, we're open, we're open...
Well, these are the minimum requirements.
Basically, what this is, is at our discretion, okay? And, boundaries or bound, no boundaries, guidelines or no guidelines, it's our discretion. If we feel, and by making guidelines and boundaries, if one is just, they just tweak it a little bit, because they're gonna look at these guidelines, and they're gonna go say, "Oh, hell, you're just giving them a rub, man." I mean, that's...
In other words, you're saying, they're, they're always gonna have a loophole.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's my personal thoughts, because they're just my thoughts. 'Cause sometimes, when you, you think you're doing the right thing, if you don't look at it from every other angle...
I understand.
And, we think one way, because we sit here, but these people that have these wells, and they're in that business, they look at us, and they listen to us, and they say, "Well, that's a real easy counter, that one." So, I...
I, I certainly agree with Commissioner Holm there, too, and I was, I mean, I was just thinking while he was talking, y'all were talking, might be good for the county to maybe, uh, spend a little money on an attorney that's familiar with, of course, you know, there're injection wells all over the state, and just say, "Whatever, counties have done," or, you know, just to cover y'all's selves, you know, just what Carl said, and not confide us all.
Do we have some kind of deadline, Mr. Ruckman, on this, on making the decision on the ten thousand?
Well, the hearing, well, not necessarily, the hearing, I think, is, uh, December thirteenth.
Yes, sir. Falls on a Thursday.
Yeah, so...
Basically, before that.
I mean, the larger bills will probably come out after that, so, I mean, you know, whenever.
It would be great.
Whenever.
So, we would be safe in having a special meeting regarding this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you...
We would be safe having a special meeting regarding this, we'd have it till December the thirteenth? Now, we're gonna use it every day.
Yeah, we're gonna, yeah, we're...
Okay, let me talk to the judge, whenever...
The sooner the better, so that we'll know, we'll become aware...
Right now.
Where the, where the county stands, and how y'all are, will be...
Okay.
Yes, and then, and then the, then that way, our attorneys may be able to contact in comparison with your attorneys as well, since he's also meeting with the city commissioners.
No, but, let me talk to Judge Shaw, since she's not here right now, and I'll come to board and speaking with her, too, and, and then about what we're gonna do on this, and we'll get back with you.
Do you want to, some zoning, zoning, or something?
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Zoning, I think, zoning. Thank you.
We have our red alert, next meeting will be the last business day of November. Next week is Thanksgiving, and then by the time you post it, it may be the last business day of November, we need again, so that might be when you're...
We'll let y'all know, we got everything done by then. Now, we'll have a special meeting after that.
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you all, ma'am. What number are we on, guys?
Forty-two.
Twenty?
Uh, twenty-one, left the table, it's...
No action.
No action.
Just took no action. Twenty-two, discussion of Commissioners Court meeting, ten twenty-three twelve, in regard to setting, you know what, I am very sorry, on the number twenty, I didn't even read the resolution. Let me read the resolution real quick. A resolution of the city of Karnes City, Texas, regarding this opposition to an application to dispose of oil and gas by injection well that is pending before the rural commission of the Tex, of Texas, as proposed by Karnes County Properties LLC, and setting an effective date. Whereas, the city of Karnes City, Texas, the city has reviewed and analyzed the application presented by Karnes County Properties LLC, with regards to its proposed oil and gas, gas injection well, and city council unanimously opposes the proposed application, and, whereas the city believes that the application of Karnes County Properties LLC, with regards to its proposed oil and gas injection well, which would be located in a close proximity to the city's municipal boundaries, pose a health, safety, and public welfare risk to residents of the city and the county, and, there's one piece they're gonna, they left out, I'm not gonna read that, whereas the city, the city council believes that the close sites, close proximity to the city limits, endangers the city's public water supplies, in that there is nothing more important to the public than an adequate supply of clean drinking water, and, whereas the city council is also concerned about the location of the injection well, in that the well would be located near the intersection of FM thirteen fifty-three and Highway one eighty-one, and this intersection outside the city limits has limited safety controls, and the anticipated increase in truck, truck traffic only adds to the safety risk of Karnes City residents. Now, therefore, it be resolved and ordered by the city council of the city of Karnes City, Karnes County, Texas, section one, a copy of this resolution opposing oil and gas injection well, filed by Karnes County Properties LLC, will be provided to the Texas rural commission. Section two, the city shall send a representative to testify on December thirteenth, two thousand twelve, before the Texas rural commission to oppose this oil and gas injection well filed by the Karnes County Properties LLC. Section three, any prior resolution of the city council to, in conflict with the provisions contained in the resolution, are hereby repealed. I'm just reading everything they put on here. repeal it, revoke. Section four, this resolution shall take immediate effect on passage. I forgot to read it, I apologize.
That was the city's resolution.
That was the city's, right. But the judge told me to make sure to read it. Okay, now that I'm reading.
Can you read that?
We're on twenty-two, right? Discussion of Commissioners Court meeting, ten twenty-three twelve, in regard to setting salaries for county employees. Arthur, Sam, Kelly.
No marks, too many fellows. Is there a difference between a disposal well and injection well? Or are they the same?
The same.
Same thing, right? Okay. On seventy-two, eighth tenths of a mile west, with a two thirty-nine seventy-two intersection, is a disposal well being put in. I got the information from text out, from an entry permit for a disposal well. I'm not concerned about the smell, I'm concerned about the traffic there. Now, what I wanna talk to you about today, and when I get through, you probably won't let me come back ever again, but, and I'm gonna refer to the Commissioners Court as the court. I'm gonna refer to the district judge, Phil Saxon, as judge. I'm gonna use the term "they" in place of the name of the commissioners up here. The Commissioners Court is the one that runs the business of the county, not the district, not the district judge over there. Her job is to handle civil and criminal cases that are not handled by lower courts. She covers the counties of Atascosa, Karnes, Wilson, Freo, LaSalle counties. Now, the judge states that, and she appeared before y'all, and I'm getting all my information from that man right there, so if it's wrong, he's the man to, to look to. Got it out in the paper. The judge said, the lawyers, the auditors worked hard and long hours, deserved salary increases that year, but she didn't say how many hours is long. He said forty? Is Casper, they work forty hours a week?
On occasion, yes. Sometimes it's more.
Okay. Uh, the salary, members, members, the salary levels remain lower than comparable other Texas counties. We can compare what other counties paid. We've got to only compare what Karnes County has, we've gotta live within our budget. There are other departments in the county where the employees work hard, the county clerk's office, lady sitting right there, they handle all these people, there are many women that are coming in, looking at the deeds and records for royalties, to get to their own guns, to get out, to get the leases signed. I've been over there times, and it looks like they were having a white sale. Now, those that you don't know what a white sale is, ask your wife, or you don't have a wife, ask your girlfriend, 'cause they're mad house in those departments, when that thing occurs. I've been in the county clerk's office looking for information, and, and the young lady sitting right here by Carol, she sits at the first door, as you go in, off from the courthouse, right? She's the one that always helps me. I go in, she nods, I nod to her, I sit down with Vincent, and when she has the time, she'll come up, I'll give her the information I want, and she's very nice about it. Does, gets what I want, tells me the bill, I'm not paying her. They, they work hard, and they're a very dedicated bunch of people. Now, the thing about it, is that I have no objection to what the auditors' salaries are, I'm objecting to the way it was handled. The, um, judge made this statement to you. Let me see where it is. Basically, what she said is that she felt that the majority of the people in the county would think of y'all as petty, small, and incompetent. I thought that would, is very inappropriate to make that kind of statement. Now, she didn't say that she thought all petty and incompetent, she thought the people of the county would feel that way. I don't want anybody telling me, a district judge, a state judge, a federal judge, telling me what I'm gonna think. I'll think my own way, even though I'm just one person. Now, when they were going through this, uh, one member of the court said that the actual figures of the three salaries was not known at the time the member voted to approve the pledge. One member of the court did not look at the amount before voting. One member of the court said, "Given raises and taken it back reflects poorly on the county." Another member of the court stated, "We voted that way, that's the way I should see it, we have to leave it that way." One member abstained, but it's been my experience, the first abstains of voting on items because is a conflict of interest, but, no, no such thing is brought up. My point is just basically that morale is very big in the county among, or either good or it's bad, among the employees of the county. And when somebody comes up, some department gets a fifteen percent increase over last year's salary, and y'all voted previously when you set the budget, I think it was a five percent increase. The treasurer brought up, that got poured up to you. I think that you fellows just got caught with your pants down. Old saying that goes back to when you're not prepared, Texas, I don't whether it's because you weren't given the information you need to have, or you weren't given the information that you needed to make a good decision, and just didn't, uh, read it, or I think about it, or whether you forgot that it was five percent reported, it was brought up to you by the treasurer, that it's gonna be this fifteen percent. What I want from you folks, just as a citizen, I want y'all to study the material that's getting to, it's not getting to you, you asked for it. You discuss it between yourselves, like y'all discussed this other, back and forth, and come up with good, fair decisions on everything. Two thousand thirteen's gonna be a good year. Alpha Bennett, we're getting a new attorney, we're getting a new commissioner, and we've got a new sheriff on board. Thank you for your time. If you're busy, I'll just stay home and work my goat shit.
No, thanks, Sam, appreciate it.
Really, I wish y'all would think more about this stuff, so that everybody's happy. I don't know about Carol, this young lady that Carol had sitting beside her, is she gonna replace you next week?
She's actually leaving for a higher-paying job.
Are you serious?
Yes.
She's the one I deal with?
Yes, sir. She'll still be with the county.
Where's going?
Thanks, Tracy.
Huh?
She's gonna be the nine-one-one technician.
You mean technician, what do you call, what I'm nine-one-one?
No, no, she, Tracy, could you explain that? Brenda. Brenda. Will you tell them what the nine-one-one technician does?
The nine-one-one technician gives out the, logs down the nine-one-one addresses, makes the maps, works with ACOG, getting everybody where you can GPS it, all of that, helps with emergency...
Did you hire her over there?
Did I do it? Yes. She's very qualified.
Oh, I know that. Damn you, man.
Thank you, Mr. Hallid, thank you. He's very lucky, he's very...
Please, please, don't say that they can qualify. Now, you're using enough hops, don't you?
Yes, I do.
Would you more than put a, drive a maintainer down one of your roads?
I'd have any one of them do it.
You're right, you're coming, take your money.
Number twenty-three, payment of bills.
Do you have a pair of glasses?
Okay, guys, page one, about two-thirds of the way down, the seventy-five hundred dollars for progress billing period ending nine-thirty, two thousand and twelve, that is on our external independent audit. You'll see in there the nine thousand, twelve thousand, those are the fiscal year thirteen budgetary contributions to the Soil and Water Conservation District and the Karnes County Historical Society. You flip over to page three, about two-thirds of the way down, the expenditure to Atascosa County for two thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents, that is for Karnes County's prorata portion of the district court reporter's health insurance. The next one of a hundred and four thousand seven hundred one dollars and ninety cents, that is also Karnes County's prorata share of the cost of operations for fiscal year thirteen of the district attorney's budget. The second to the last item, twenty thousand seven hundred thirty dollars and six cents, is Karnes County's prorata share of the operations of the court coordinator's department's office. The next page, up at the top, is an expenditure for three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, that is Karnes County's prorata share of the district judge's liability insurance. These are all out of the ordinary expenditures, that's why I'm pointing them out. On page eight, the fifth item from the bottom, payable to Phil Pop Motors, sixty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and seventy-five cents, is the mechanic's truck that was approved and the budget amended for fiscal year twelve. The truck was ordered in July two thousand and twelve, and recently came in. Also, there are four different items within the Roden Bridge expenditures that total eight thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Those are expenses in relation to the damages incurred in the County Road one fifty-two fire. Those are expenses in relation to the damages incurred in the County Road 152 fire. Those are the out-of-ordinary bills in this cycle.
I'm making motion with Ben Zill.
Second.
Motion been made a second and hold in favor. Aye?
Aye.
Another poll?
Aye.
county clerk.
How much you have here?
Of your words, words. Let me look, let me look over here.
Want to read it off here, Karen?
Huh?
I can read it off here if you want.
Okay, that's fine.
Total money for the month of October was $52,928.28.
Sorry about that. District clerk?
She said to let y'all know that she's not done with her final report, so she won't be submitted in today.
Okay. Thank you, Judge. County attorney?
Little head.
Justice on the peace?
I am.
If you look on page two, there was 232 cases filed in my court. You go to the last page, on page five, my office collected $45,448.70. The amount kept by the county was $30,956.35, permitted to the state, $14,492.35. Total collected was $45,448.70.
Thank you, Judge. You have another department?
Ellen has one. She just, she went to Bume Cox.
Okay. Special projects?
Yes, Ellen, she's Bume Cox.
I hear you.
Hey, me, hey, me, did he?
I did too. Yeah, we're still a little bit on the bank for these purposes. You want to, this policy, you buy the first week?
Yes.
In Karnes City too?
Yes.
Karnes, just one playoff this week, brother.
And who's wrong, you're playing?
I was Tracy.
Granger.
Where?
Playing Granger, not in Granger in Mansfield.
Social.
Offered in high school.
Not Granger, they're by title.
But you're playing in high school.
Yeah. Granger's up there by title.
Yeah, they try to meet in the middle, but they can't. Right.
Isn't that what the state hospital is? Granger, state mental hospital.
Okay, listen, what we're waiting for with this question, number twenty-five, I'm sorry. Jeffrey?
Yeah.
Let me know about that, but that would keep everybody's, must keep it going, so...
That's all, it's lost, Tony. The one I put.
I'll be printing checks.
You don't never seem to get my name in the file, though. I'm teasing your spell.
Yeah, right up there next to the one I cast for. Record, record, if you work, look on some of them, the front ones are the ones that got bigger, you get farther down the line, that's the one, because that's the gap. And also working with, got a pretty good-sized project going on with Murphy Oil, that's going to happen in your precinct, a road that goes down, three fifty-four that goes down from Mr. Smith's house.
Is that, Jacob, he's in Washington right now? He called me from Washington yesterday and told me that they're going to, that they're going to do a project out there, a mile and a half, a mile and a quarter base material?
Yes, we're working on that, and that's going to be about, we don't know the cost, total cost of the gap, but I'm, I'm just about done with it, we're going to give that cost to them, and they said they are going to do it, because the road is on the side of the earth.
He gave me a cost estimate, what he thought. I believe he said that he was working with you and Rick, and he gave me a cost estimate. Didn't seem high enough, but he mentioned 60,000 to me.
Sixty-plus.
Sixty-plus. I thought it was more than that, but...
We're going to supply the pipes. I'm working with them, I told them on our agreements, all the narrow pipes and the pipes that are getting engaged in, so I'm going to donate the pipes. They didn't want to, you know, we're kind of working head-on, head-to-head with them, and that's, they're going to give me all that base material and stuff, and then trucking and everything, we're definitely taking, and we got about two pipes to put in, so it's going to be a plus for the county there on that side. That road be in good shape, and then we're going to try some chemical on that road, try to hold that road down, which is a stabilized material and stuff, hoping to truck them in very quick, where we'll start using it in a lot of places on roads. We're going to try to maintain these roads and hold it down, also working with Murphy on some other roads, and on County Road 199, where we're going to go off to three different oil plants and try to get some help on that road, that's eight miles of road that's open in Detroit, and trying to get the pipes all done.
Yeah, Murphy Oil, they told me yesterday that they're going to be, they're going to be good neighbors with us.
Yeah, they're stepping forward, and one by one, we got them walking forward, is just working with them, trying to get it done.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Going back to twenty-five. On our special projects for the month of October, we had 16 development permits for a total of 625, and that included some floodplain applications and that one. For the OSSF, we had 14 of those, and the total for that was 59,500.
Thank you. Going back to twenty-five, that is a report on county, I want to see your report from the auditorium.
As Bye pointed out earlier, there is the one change on page seven. On the SOFF funds, the cash balance should be $12,453.80, and the certificate of deposit should be zero. Also included are your debt requirements as of October 31st, as well as items of interest, which show you your cash on hand, your certificates of obligation as of the end of the month, as well as sales tax collected. With your sales tax received on October 15th was $900,531.55. Same period last year was $316,679.42, an increase of almost $600,583,852.13.
It's good we have almost everything invested right, so let's get that, it's good. Thank y'all. Carl, personal policies. Got anything?
No. Pete has to go to it. And the weight cycling, we got through with the tires, it was Carl, the main man out there with the tires and all that, behind the footrest on there, but we got it all done. The tires, the tires are gone.
All gone.
They're all gone, but there's only a few that, there's not any...
Jeffrey need to...
No, he don't need to take us anymore.
I got plenty.
But we got, we have all that done.
When did we get six, was it six?
Six, it was six loads, right?
I think that's correct.
I think it was six loads, yeah.
I have six.
And the power, the lumber and all that, of course, been out there for quite a few times. It's about three-quarters of the way, right?
Yeah, it looks good.
Junior Desi's been working very hard on that.
I'll need you to check things.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're going to keep us in check. All right, Tracy, anything?
Total permits, around $48,700 in permit fees for the month of October, taken in for permits of entrances, water lines, and board.
Thank you, Tracy. Last one, I guess we've talked enough. The last one is adjourned.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I say it. I made a second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Much love.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Sir?